We'll get started. This is the meeting of the Rutland Zoning Board of Appeals. Present are Pressenical Vice Chair, Robert Paulson, Arthur Wells, Paul Karain via video, Jacob Morris, I'm Rick Soret, Tamika Murphy, Secretary. First item on the agenda is an application petition for variance, Jaclyn O'Brien, 7 Central Street, 7 Central Treaty Road. So she is seeking to build an attached in-law addition to an existing home. Now, I took a look at this and there's actually been some communication between Dave George and David McCray, the town building commissioner, about this. There's been some discussion back and forth, emails. So what we have is a lot that's divided pretty, almost pretty closely in half by a delineation of town district. So the line goes in, on one side of the property is Town Center District 2. Town Center District 2 is even less restrictive than Town Center 1, so it's very non-restrictive. And then the other part of the lot is an R-40, which is very restrictive, residential 40. So, the lot is there. Chris, Jaclyn was kind enough to bring in a bigger set of plans if you wanted to glance at them.
Thank you.
Okay. So, if you look at the lot, you can see a line, like a, almost like a, a line going I don't know if this is gonna help anybody, but, Chris, I went on the town website, it actually, you could zoom in on these things, and it actually, it doesn't show a whole lot more, but it's, you can see a faint line going right through the diagonal. And you can, I think you can see it on her petition that she submitted.
Do you have the copy?
Uh, yeah. The copy?
There was some.
Yeah, we have it, yeah. All right, so.
I'm just curious, how did, how did that happen?
Don't ask me.
I think it's very common.
Because the town senate district was much more recent than I'm sure.
Oh yeah, my house was built in 78.
I can see something way back in the days kinda getting mixed up like that, but, it's kinda...
I think they ju, I think...
They messed when they drew that line.
Yeah, I think they ju, I think they just draw the lines, and if your lot's in the middle of it, it is. So, so, so the applicable section of the bylaw, which covers the situation, is 7D. And I don't wanna go crazy with this, but I think we need to spend a little bit of time on it. So essentially, it says where the boundary of a zoning district divides a lot, so we know that the zoning boundary divides the lot, we know it does, goes right down the middle. Having frontage on a street in a less restrictive district than you, than the less restrictive district, which is TC2, applies, but only 30 feet from the line, the zoning line. I know, you can't make this stuff up. And then, so, so to make a long story short, and I took a look at this in my office, but this, this lot that is before us right now, it's satisfied, it falls into this category. So, it essentially says that the provisions of TC2, which are much less restrictive than our 40, apply, but only to the extent of 30 feet beyond the line. You can see that diagonal line, so 30 feet up. And then, if you go down, it says that where the boundary of a district divides a lot, having frontage on a street in a more restricted district, which it does, it satisfies this prong too. It says that, that our 40 shall apply to the whole lot. So, I'm looking at this, this bylaw, and it's not workable.
Says both.
It says both.
There's no way I report.
All right, so, so, we can discuss this, but, right out, right out of the gun, I'm gonna come out saying that, that where the statute, the bylaw is ambiguous, that the less restrictive provision should apply. So I, I think that TC2 should apply 30 feet from the line, so...
When you say 30 feet from the line, what do you mean?
All right, let me just, I know I'm just showing...
Like, this is the line right here.
So this is the line, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So in other words, you...
30 feet outside that line?
Yeah, you just take this, you just, if she wants to build here, you just say 30 feet.
30 feet over.
30 feet, like, and, yeah.
Show Chris that picture.
Yeah. See, that's the 30 feet, but I just wonder about this little jogger, is that included in that?
It's a little outside of the little jogger, it's like, yeah. Right, so that little, so let's take a 3 for buffer.
All right, so, so I'm gonna be real scientific here. Real scientific, so I'm gonna take a piece of paper, and there's 30 feet li, mark.
They've got that mark right there.
Yeah, all right, so I'm gonna take my little paper, and I'm gonna put it right on the line, and you can see that it, it covers almost all of the proposed addition, except for one little corner of it. Okay, so, so, does, does that sorta kinda make sense to people that were sitting here? All right, so...
Now, well, you know, and one other thing, to that, to that second thing you said about the area with, was it, when you have two split zones like that?
Yeah.
The zoning with the, is it?
Less restrictive.
The less restrictive automatically takes over?
That's what it says, but then...
And then it also says, the zoning with the more restrictive provisions takes over. So it doesn't...
Is that the next sentence?
It's poorly written.
Right, yeah.
So it's not a matter of which one has more of a zone, you know, and it, that has no difference, that doesn't, that's what I thought it meant.
Well, it, this...
And I didn't see, like, you look at this, it looks like an even split right down the middle.
Yeah, the bylaw needs, the bylaw needs to be rewritten. If it went to court, the court would, a court would invalidate it.
You know, the only way it would make sense in our case is if the lot, if it wasn't divided at the street, so if it just cut the corner?
Yeah.
And the street was all TC2?
Yeah.
Then we would have to apply it that way.
Yeah.
But, in this case, it's divided, and it, the division of the, the two districts hits the street, so you've got frontage on both.
Yes, yeah, right. All right, so, Art, do you have any comment on that legal issue, with the, with which, which provision should apply?
Well, first, I, I think, just to sort of elaborate on the, the issue with the bylaw, 7D does not actually account for a scenario where the dividing line is, the frontage is in both districts. It talks about if the frontage is in TC2, then TC2, if the frontage is in RC40, then RC40 would apply. It doesn't have...
All frontage, like, like, it's almost the way this bylaw's written, it's all frontage.
Yeah, so in other words, there should be a, a third, a third option, which is what's gonna happen when it's split, it's not there.
Yeah, 'cause it's almost like this, when you read this, it's like, whichever one has the frontage gets the, gets the jurisdiction.
It just doesn't deal with a split.
And it doesn't, yeah, and she's got a lot of it in the TC2.
Well, that's, yeah, I mean, as far as there we go with TC2.
Well, that, that, yeah, we're...
I mean, it's got the most frontage, and really, this bylaw seems to reference the, you know, all frontage, but couldn't we make the understanding that because she has more TC2 frontage, we should follow that kinda bylaw, that part, side of the bylaw, the way we see it?
I, I think that's an argument in favor of, you know, the, I mean, the other thing is, yeah, I was just thinking, that's true, but I was thinking, well, if there's, if it's a badly written bylaw, do we, do we apply the more restrictive or the less restrictive? My, my gut reaction is to apply the less restrictive.
Well, I also think that if you're trying to sort of parse out what, you know, in light of the sort of gap, what would be most consistent with what we do have, and I think it's fair to say, so much more of the frontage is in TC2, that's a way to kinda make sense and reconcile what we have. I mean, you know, it's not literally written that way, but, you know, I, I think in, in that case, you know, that's not like we can say, forget it, we're not gonna make a decision. We, we have to sort of fill in where the bylaw isn't, and I, I would certainly lean towards applying the less restrictive, I mean, if you wanna get all the way down to it, more of the frontage, significantly more of the frontage is in TC2, so I think that factually would support going that way.
Yeah, all right, thanks, Art. Jake, your thoughts on which, which way we should go?
I agree, the less restrictive. I don't think the applicant should be punished because of the...
Yeah, yeah, that was, that was, that was my thought.
I'm saying, less restrictive, yeah.
Okay, so Paul, I know you can't see us, but were you able to hear pretty much what we were saying?
Yeah, yeah, what's the, I don't have the bylaws with me, what's the frontage required in TC2?
All right, so, that, that, just for those of you who have it, that's 10B. I'm gonna pick, I'm just gonna pull it up right now. Okay, so TC2, it would be minimum, uh, front, minimum frontage, 125 feet.
Oh, okay, so she would, all right, now, just, okay, she's only got 100, uh, 107 or so, 106.3 inches in TC2, okay.
All right, I, I, Paul, I mean, do you, do you have that in front of you? The application in front of you?
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at the thing, she's got 100 and, what, 120, 100, uh, no, 106.3 feet in TC2.
Of TC2, yeah.
Oh, oh, okay, I was talking about the whole lot.
Yeah, the whole lot's 130 feet.
Yeah, the whole lot's 130 feet, she's got 100, 106 rather of it in TC2, so I definitely would say, I mean, if you're way over 50% of her frontage, so, you know, you're 80%, 80 to 90% of her, 80% or so of her frontage is there, you gotta pick one of the two, I would go with the TC2.
Okay, yeah, all right, so that's, I think we're all, there's a consensus there. All right, so if, if that's the case, and she meets the minimum frontage for TC2, then we got, now we have to talk minimum lot size. So, she's got 22,000 square feet, more or less, minimum lot size for TC2 is 20,000, and then if you add another dwelling unit, what she wants to do, it's another 10, so she needs 30,000, so I, she essentially needs eight, a variance for 8,000 square feet. Does that, does that add up for everybody else?
Yeah.
Yeah, just to, I mean, it's, it's a little less than eight, because she's got more than 22. So, Paul, does that, does that add up for you too?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, now, before, I just wanna go over some things that we got. So we got a letter, did everybody get the letter from David George? All right, so, so he said that the planning board looked at it, and, you know, it's an application for dimensional relief. The original letter from David McCray denying, said, he, he went with the second prong of 7D, and said, the whole, the restrictions in our 40 apply to the whole lot. We're rejecting that. So, that said, David McCray and Dave George discussed it, were in agreement, and then Dave George went to the planning board, the planning board looked at it, and they said, okay, we're gonna go with, with the less, with the more restrictive prong. I don't, I don't know how much they got into it, but David George said, you go to apply the restrictions in our 40s. So the planning board looked at it, and they said, they're talking about 15A, which is our 40. I know this is like, so complicated, and they basically said, okay, fine, if you as the ZBA wanna give her, you know, the, a variance for some crazy amount of square footage, then go, go for it. They said, we don't have a problem with it. The only thing that, that we're disagreeing with them on is that I'm saying, well, we're saying now, that TC2 applies and not our 40. So they're, they're saying that it's up to us, they don't, you know, to give her the variance or not give her the variance, we're just disagreeing on the amount of square footage that she needs, the amount of area that she needs.
Right, and I, it sounds like, and correct me if I'm wrong, 'cause it is complicated, but it sounds like the planning board looked at the area issue as if it were under our 40 and still had no objection.
Yes, yeah.
So we're actually looking at it from a more lenient point of view.
Yeah.
And it's, you know, so I would say they'd be even less likely to have a problem with it.
Well, all right, without even going into it, I'll tell you right now, our 40 is, is 43,000 square feet. If you add another dwelling unit, it's another 50, so she, so she needs an acre and a half, and she doesn't, she has a half an acre. So, if we wanna give her a one acre variance, but we're saying we don't need to do that.
Right.
Because we're, we're gonna apply TC2 standards, okay?
Which I think is the right way to go.
Yeah, okay. Chris, did you wanna keep this handy, or are you... Okay, I'll just, I'm gonna assist this, thank you. Okay, now, at this, at this point, is there, on the legal issues, is there anything more that we need to discuss before we, we hear from the applicant? Yeah, I think we, we covered the legal issues.
Yeah, I'm all set.
All right, so, Jaclyn, would you like to, would you like to speak at this point?
Yes, I would. I just wanna say thank you very much, first of all, this is the most convoluted thing I've ever tried to put together, and, you know, Tamika has been great, Lynn Miller has been great, Dave George has helped me, Norm Anderson has helped me, I've had a lot of help from everyone in town, so I just wanna thank you. I've been wanting to do this for years, my daughter and son-in-law are here, they're the ones that are gonna be buying my house and putting on the addition for me, and, you know, I think it's just gonna work really well. I love Rutland, I've worked in town here for 26 years, I wanna stay in Rutland, I can't afford the condos in Rutland, unfortunately, and I just, you know, all we want is an addition for me to live, and I can help them out, they can help me out, and my neighbors are all, I've spoken to all my neighbors, they're all in favor of it, every neighbor. I haven't had anybody object to it, I've talked to the fire chief, he has no issues with it, I have a long enough driveway that we can get three cars in the driveway, you know, whatever you guys, whatever you decide, we'll comply with, I just would like to get it done. This is my builder here, this is Scott Herzig, he's done a fabulous job, and Neil Adamiak is my architect, he's done a fabulous job, I've had a lot of help from everyone, you know, that's put this together.
All right, all right, so I, I just wanna point out at this time that I think one of the concerns that David McCray, the building commissioner, had, was, was that at some point, this property might be sold, and it's, it's essentially two dwelling units on one lot, and he was concerned a little bit about, you know, eventually whether there might be inadequate parking, you know, that, you know, if you have two dwelling units, it's reasonable that there might be two cars per unit, and there might, we might have to park cars on the street, that kinda thing. So, does anyone at this point have any questions of Jaclyn or Art?
I guess we could ask with the plan, as with regard to parking.
Yeah, I have a, I don't know how, I don't know how many feet my driveway is, but, yeah, I mean, there's enough, I have a one-car garage, one of us is gonna park on the side, I have a little, a side lot in my grass there, I'm gonna gravel it and park there. Right, in fact, my other son and daughter-in-law have been living with me for a couple months while their house is getting, you know, ready to, to move in, and we haven't had any problem with parking. I plan on parking there, going right through the front door there, where the breezeway isn't going in that way.
You can't park on that street, can you?
Yeah, people do, actually, my stone, I have a stone wall that's in front of my, the front of my property, and when I have a party once in a while, people park there in front, yeah, there's enough, it's wide enough that they can park there.
All right, Paul, I know you can't see Ms. O'Brien, but do you have any questions of her at this time?
Well, just what she said, now, this parking in front of the stone, is that parking on the street she's talking about?
No, it's on the grass, actually.
Between the street and the stone wall.
Well, here's my concern with that, as a, Town Row has an on-street parking ban, that first 13 feet or so are considered on-street, technically, is that on, is that considered on-street parking, what you're talking about, in winter?
First of all, we wouldn't use it in the winter, we'd only use the driveway in the winter.
Well, yeah, you wouldn't, but going forward into a, to family, that would be possible problem there, if you have a one-car wide driveway.
It's really, it's really one and a half cars can get in it, really.
No, it's not, it's not two side by side, so you can't, that's, with parking would be an issue, I do see where the, the issue would arise there.
Okay, all right, thanks, thanks a lot, Paul. All right, yeah, Paul, I'm sorry.
This is Town Water and Sewer, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. This is all I got.
Okay, all right, so there is another letter here, it's from Georgiana and Scott Nada, is it Nada?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, and you're Georgiana?
Yes.
Yeah, well, we met briefly, but, I'm tough with good names and... Okay, so, does everybody have a copy of the letter?
Yep.
That was on email? All right, so, it indicates that this particular butter is in favor.
Yeah.
And, now, you can, you're not considered a senior though, right?
Do you really wanna ask?
No, 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 it's all right, I'm considered, I'm technically a senior.
I am a senior.
Yeah, okay, all right, okay, so we have an a butter, and Tamika, did we receive any negative letters from any of butters or any interested person?
There's not another positive one that I sent out this morning.
Right.
Nothing opposing.
Right. Is there, is there anybody else here that would like to comment, I mean, not, not anyone who's here with the applicant, but anyone else that I don't see, or is sitting somewhere? All right, I don't see anybody here that wishes to comment. All right, so, I, I wanna bring up a legal issue that we just touched on, so, if we, I know you're, you designed this thing, and then you brought this, and we're, we're going through all this legal wrangling, but if we're, if we're going to apply the provisions of TC2, do we, do we take the 30-feet restriction that's in the bylaw, in the first prong of 7D? All right, all right, so I, I know I'm blindsiding everybody again, let me just look at it, it says, it says...
I just think that's what they're entitled to.
Yeah, all right, I just, I just wanna make, make sure that, that I'm, I'm clear with the rest of the board, I know you looked at it, and I know, Jake, you probably looked at it too, right? So, there's two prongs in here, one says our 40 applies, the other says TC2 applies. If you take that first prong, which we, which we're going to, it says...
It extends the less restrictive by 30 feet.
Yeah, it says you can, you can extend beyond the zoning line, which goes basically diagonal through the middle of the property, but it may extend not more than 30 feet within the lot beyond the district boundary. So, in other words, we're taking that line, that diagonal line, and, and it's already measured out here, 30 feet, so it's easy for me to do, without engineering tools, and I'm looking at it, and it looks like the, the edge, as I alluded to before, the edge of, of the proposed dwelling, the addition, is outside of that 30 feet.
You mean one little corner?
One little corner. So, so my, my question to the builder is, if we're inclined to, to grant this variance for more or less 8,000 square feet, and we're going to apply, we're going to apply 7D of the bylaw to, you know, which is actually very favorable to the, to the applicant here, but, is it possible to modify your design so you would, everything would, would be within 30 feet of that zoning line?
Yeah, I think that would probably be something we can top to nail about, the architect, and the design aspect of it.
Okay.
Guessing that something could be done.
All right, so, so, I'll, I'll hear from any interested party, or the applicant herself, as to whether you think that's, that's a reasonable interpretation.
I think it's reasonable.
If we were to move the addition forward... I, I, I guess I'm just gonna ask a question though, why does that matter?
Yeah.
I mean, so the zoning district is larger, but why does that matter, that you're, you're out of that little area, like, like, if that was our 40, you could put a five-foot breezeway on there, no problem?
Yeah, it's...
Right? You could, you could have a five-foot breezeway inside your house, just to walk in, put your boots in, hang your coat up, and, you know, as long as you didn't need a variance from the side setback or front setback or whatever?
Because then, part of the structure would be non-conforming on the other side, right?
Well, it...
That's how you think, I, I don't know.
I'm just, I don't know where you're going with, like, I don't, I don't, I don't understand the issue.
All right, so...
I wouldn't wanna give them, like, I understand what you're saying, I wouldn't wanna allow the 30-foot extension, and then have the, the building constructed, and then it's over the, the line, it's in the R-40.
I actually think it's sort of, that 30-foot line, I'm not sure, once you decide that they're subject to the less restrictive zone, then you move on to the, the area, you know, question, and they're entitled to the lesser, you know, the 8,000-foot variance. I, I just think that applies to the lot at that point.
Yeah, the size of the lot, right?
You know, the, the size of the lot, and so that line, I'm not sure exactly how that fits in.
Should we throw, we throw this out?
No, we're saying that they're entitled to the TC, this TC2 treatment.
The question is whether the new construction has to be within the 30-foot extension.
Okay, all right, so that's a good point, so, just like a side set or a back variance, why couldn't we give them a variance for 3 feet to leave that corner in?
I don't know if we have the authority to do that, I don't know.
Well, we do it on side setbacks.
Yeah.
It's a zoning boundary, and you're just encroaching, 'cause she's not leaving her lot line, she's just going into, she's going outside of a boundary line like a, like, I mean, that 30-foot, that 30-foot buffer was just something that this town drew up, it's not like some almighty law that goes from coast to coast, yeah, it's just, you know, Norm Anderson and the rest of the gang said, let's just give them a 30-foot buffer, but it's, he could've put 40-foot in there, and she, it wouldn't even be an issue right now. And I would be inclined to actually just allow a variance for that if that was an issue for somebody, I mean, I just, I just think it's crazy to re, you know, I don't know.
Can I ask what... Sure, what's, just, Paul.
Rick, yes, clarification, they need a 10-foot side setback, right? And if we apply TC2 to the entire lot, which I think is what we discussed and we agreed to, then they don't need any other, it would just be, the only variance we're talking about is square footage, correct?
That's what I'm saying. TC2's not, we can't apply it, according to the bylaw, to the entire lot, that's the way I read it. We can give the, we can apply it to another 30 feet, so we can give them some more TC2, we can give them 30 feet of it.
Well, do we...
It looks like the structure would have to go in that 30 feet, but I also agree, why couldn't we do something about that? As long as it's in the decision.
All right, all right, so I just wanna be clear on this, this 10-foot side setback, so am I correct in, in looking at this diagram, it is 23.7 feet from the proposed dwelling to the lot?
Correct.
So, so...
So in TC2, you have a 10-foot side setback, so, you know, again, it doesn't apply to the whole lot, or to just that 30-foot buffer, but regardless, she doesn't need a side setback from the lot line?
Yeah, yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
It's just that little corner that hangs into our 40, but...
Yeah.
Do you just kinda do the inverse and treat it like as a, as a, it's like a variance to yourself? I mean, then it's easiest, I don't know what is.
So, Paul, when you, when you, when you just mentioned the, the side setback, it's so it says 10 feet, I mean, do you, do you...
He's saying it's okay.
You're, you're saying it's okay? You're good with it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm wondering, what are you, all right, you're talking about that little corner that goes into the TC2.
Yeah, but that, that's, that's third, we're talking about, draw a line 30 feet...
Show him the plan.
Yeah, 30 feet from the, the zoning boundary, and does all her structure fit into it? And, and I mean, I'm asking the question, is it, is it that critical, you know?
Oh, you're saying, no, put her 30 feet off of the zoning boundary?
Yeah. And I, I don't even know if I'm right on that interpretation. The more I look at it, the more I'm thinking, I don't know.
To do that, you'd have to build a completely separate structure, right? We'd start with...
Yeah.
I mean, I, I just don't see that as doable. I think, I think we, you know, you pick one or two of the, you apply either TC2 or, uh,
Yeah.
whatever, the RA forty, whatever, to the other, to the lot, one or the other.
Yeah, yeah, I'm stuck, yeah.
Area is half, half and half. We don't know.
Well, it's, it's basically this, you're, you're encroaching into our forty territory and it gives you thirty feet to do it. And, and so...
How many, can we ask the builder if he, how many feet that corner is going to be? I mean, I don't even know who drew this line.
Yeah, I mean, how ambiguous is that line?
Oh, the line going through it? Oh, that's, that's right from the zoning map on the, on the...
No, the, the line with the thirty-foot...
Twenty-seven feet.
Oh, oh.
I don't know who drew that.
Oh, so you're saying it might not be accurate? Might not be the skill?
I hope that it isn't.
Jake, what line exactly are you talking about?
This line right here. See this line right here going through? Oh, this is her application.
This one?
No, 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 this one right here. See, this is the thirty-foot line right here.
Yeah.
And it says zone boundary thirty-foot extension.
Oh, no, no, I, I, I just took this, graphed it on a piece of paper and then...
No, but this on her application shows that, the same thing you said, in that little corner over here.
Oh, I don't even know where that line came from. I don't know if anyone drew that, so...
This one.
So I don't know. It's so, I, I didn't even, I didn't...
Do you, do you guys know who put, on your application, do you know who put that little thirty-foot extension line on there?
I think that was, um...
Dave or...
Mike, I think my lawyer put it on there.
Your lawyer did, that's part of his, um...
Oh, okay.
Gotcha.
All right.
So I guess the issue is, is the whole lot TC2 or just that extension?
Again, it's just that extension now that I thought about it some more.
Okay.
I don't think there's, there's any way to read it any other way.
What extension are you referring to? I'm looking at the proposed additions. Which, what do you mean?
We're just going back to the...
The bylaw says, Paul, that you can give a thirty-foot extension outside the TC2, the TC2 and whatever, the R forty boundary line. So the TC2 would expand by another thirty feet.
And there's a line, there's a line written on the, one of the proposed
On the lawyer's, yeah, on the application.
It looks like somebody, you know, not, not the person who drafted these, the plan did it.
Yeah, not Jarvis Land survey, but the, the lawyer, the applicant saying her lawyer drew in the thirty-foot extension. If you look in the application that they submitted with his backup, it has that little dash line showing that extension. And it just leaves a little bit of the back corner of the addition, probably about a seven by about an eight-foot triangle that's outside the area, you know? So that's the issue that was saying, boy, can they, can they build in that? Should they not build in that?
Yeah, I hear you.
So basically, I mean, they give, Paul, all right, I see the line. Now you come on to pull that in. You'd have to get, if they got rid of the breezeway, that would pull it in.
As far as the decision goes, it could be written in a way that says that we're going to go with the thirty-foot extension of TC2 and the, the new building has to be within it. And then it's up to the builder and the architect to make it happen.
I, I feel more comfortable with that.
And then there's the variance for the lot size.
Yeah, I, I just don't know if we have the authority to extend the thirty feet, although, I mean, I'm not closing the door on that. You know, but that makes me go...
I don't think it's that you, you, you draw, that you give an extension over thirty feet. Uh, I, I think we might have authority to allow relief for this one little edge going beyond that. And that's, that's one form of relief. The other form of relief would be on the area restriction and, you know, the eight thousand thing. Or, you know, frankly, it'd be simpler for us if, if, you know, you just redesigned and got inside the thirty. Then you're really only left with, with relief on the area question.
Yeah.
Hey, my point is, what harm is it?
You mean that it goes over the thirty?
What's, what's, what's the issue?
Oh, it's just...
Why can't we grant them the relief for that? None of the neighbors mind the things, right?
Yeah.
It's all teed up, ready to go. We're trying to make America great again.
Yeah, I, I know, I know, I know. I want to make, I want to make America great.
What is, what's the...
You know, I want to make America great.
If we don't have the power, I mean, what are we doing here? You know, I mean, if we're not the ones to right or wrong or...
All right, so I got two attorneys sitting there.
Yeah.
Tell me what the, tell me whether we have the power to, to, to expand that thirty feet.
That's not what I said.
Okay.
I'm saying if, if, if we're concerned enough about that the corner of this building actually being over the extended TC2 area, you know, I, I think someone would come in for a variance just on that point. And maybe we would grant it, maybe we not, but you, you know, you could do that. I think, and still say, all right, well, you know, that's, we're going to allow that and we're still going to apply the TC2, you know, allow the relief as if we're, you know, using the smaller, uh, you know, area issue, you know, so it's, it's two levels. You, you would grant relief on, you know, just that the corner's hanging over the thirty feet. We're not redrawing the whole line.
So like two, two variances maybe?
Two variances. Or, you know, honestly, it'd be a lot simpler if we could just redesign it, but I, so, so I'm saying...
It's still on the square footage issue.
Right, but I mean, if, if...
It's, that's easy enough. That's, right? Square foot of the lot.
It's a jig.
Eight thousand, eight, eight thousand square foot.
I'd be in favor of that, you know, it was a standalone issue and, you know, I, I think that...
The other thing I have, we have to remember, I'm sorry if I interrupt you, the, um, we didn't, the, a lawyer drew this line, so I'm just worried that. Uh, hopefully he's accurate.
Well, I, I was able to do it just on a bit of paper.
And you, you came up with the same thing.
I came up with the exact same thing.
Yeah.
All right, so, so I mean, it's likely...
But you're not a lawyer.
Yeah, you're not an engineer.
It's very, very true.
That's why I didn't even try. I don't like that.
So Jake, Jake, do you think we, do you, just for the sake of discussion, do you think the board has the power to extend that thirty feet?
Well, that's not the issue to me. We're not extending the thirty feet.
No, we can't extend the thirty feet. It's whether or not we can give it another variance to extend the structure beyond
the thirty-foot TC2.
A little portion of it.
Okay, to, to me that, okay, okay, I see what you're saying.
But I just worded much better.
I, you're wording it differently than I was wording it. Okay, all right, okay.
Or, you know, you, you have a design that doesn't even go over, you know, the, the two.
I mean, but by allowing the thirty, by doing what it sounds like we all want to do, extending the TC2 by thirty feet, they're getting the building there.
Yes.
And I, I have to believe that the builder and the architect can make it happen within the thirty feet. So that's kind of the direction I'm leaning towards. And we don't really know how many feet that is as far as the decision goes.
Right.
Unless the builder has some, some idea, but he, you know...
My only question that I think was with you guys also is the, that line. And I'm always inclined to give extra space if I know I'm approaching close to. In other words, if there was a setback on the side, ten-foot setback, I'm not going eleven feet. I'm trying to be at least fifteen feet from the setback if I can possibly do that. And so that being the case, last thing I'll ask somebody to come out after the fact and say, well, that line was ambiguous. It was just kind of a lawyer's drawn line or, or whatever, and I'm approaching upon that, then it's on me.
You know, that was my little fluff when you're trying to...
Yeah, yeah, so I think that...
And it's real in reality.
Yeah, we can probably change the design of the, of the condition and stuff, but it's going to be, it's going to be a drastic change for me to feel comfortable.
Yeah, it's, you're actually going to pull four foot two out of the building.
Yeah.
You're just going to have to pull six, seven, eight feet out of it to make sure you got...
Or move it or do something. You know, you can think if you brought it forward some, but that would, you're talking about still bringing it forward a bit, probably ten feet just to be close to that line still.
And if I can just bring up one point, I mean, the amount of square footage, the amount of area that they're using within that thirty-foot buffer
Yeah.
is so small. We're not talking like a, you know, when you think of the town center district, you're talking about a, a large mall, you know, like what Blair and the guys have uptown, where, you know, there's such, I mean, there's no grass. It, it's all pavement, parking and building. And they're consuming so much of that, that square footage, okay?
Yeah.
But this residential property in a, in a, in that TC2 district, I mean, look at all the other thirty-foot buffer that's not even being touched by the structure. This is not a large mall that's consuming ninety percent of that buffer, where now she's asking for more outside that. I mean, she's taken up ten percent of it and she's asking for another one percent and she, and then you're not even, they're not even using eighty, ninety percent of that buffer. So I just, I want to kind of put that into perspective too, where this is not a commercial project where they're, you know, they're already consuming, it's already, they've already taken so much of it to maximize their square footage and everything. I, I, I just, I don't see why the relief's a major problem, but that's my opinion. I've said it before. I'm just giving you another argument why I think we should go that way. That's all.
All right.
Cut off some of the, we'll give, we'll give you some of the bag on the back side.
So we, we've got other people here who haven't had a chance to speak. Would anyone, any interested person like to speak at this time besides the applicant?
I'm happy with her design. Um, I would, I would like her to not stay in town. She's a very nice, nice neighbor. She's a great neighbor to have. I can always, always rely on her and she, and she relies on me. And I have, and I have known them since they were small and so for her to have to move and then not to come into town, I would be upset.
Okay, appreciate it. And Tamika, you, we, we identified this, this a butter already, yes? Okay. Paul, do you have anything further you'd like to comment on at this time?
I'd just like to ask about the, um, on the drawings. Said, I heard the, she said she had currently had the single, single car garage. Is that that twelve-foot breezeway looking thing between the house and the...
It's on the existing.
The garage is on the existing home. The new addition does not have a garage.
No, that's what I'm saying, though. The, the, where is the existing garage?
Underneath. Is it drive under on the left-hand side of the house?
Oh, so it's powered out of the house?
Correct.
Okay. So the driveway is to the left of IWH roughly eight?
Yes.
Line up with the H? Or is it coming out the side? Where's the current driveway?
It's on the left-hand side. Approaching down towards the twenty-two foot mark that's on the...
Okay, do you come in that side of the house?
Yeah, and then, then the garage is on that left-hand side of the house.
Okay, okay.
All right, so I, I'm not, I'm, I'm not inclined to try to put the applicant on the spot about the hardship. I think the size of the lot and also the fact that the zoning boundary goes right through the lot is enough of a hardship. Does anyone else want to comment or explore that any further? I, I think that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so I... Yes, Paul.
Rick, I do have, I mean, the size, the zoning setup with the X number of square feet, I think hardship does need to be established. I mean, because we're, um, the topog, I mean, we're supposed to be giving variances for based on, um, the topography, such and such to, you know, I don't see how the relief we give, um, hardship falls under needing more space or wanting more space.
Yeah, I, I, I might agree with you on that. It says soil conditions, shape, topography, arguably, the way that, the way the town is zoned falls into shape.
That's what I would think.
You think, you think, you think of that?
But on the lot size, I mean, it doesn't, the lot size doesn't, you know, the topography doesn't affect that lot size.
How about shape?
Soil conditions don't affect the lot size.
Right, how about shape? I don't know.
Shape doesn't affect that lot size either. It's not like there's, I mean, the lot, the shape of the lot could be, you know, if it was a smaller frontage thing and it opened up way in back, we'd have shape possibly, but, I mean, the lot is just the squared lot roughly or an angle, it's not really square, but it's a, it's a lot that's divided up in a, in a neighborhood. I just don't see how hardship applies to increasing building space.
Okay, so, so if you were a voting member, you would vote against this, this on the basis of hardship?
At this point in time, given our past record on ones we've denied, on, we've had a couple of people applying for two families in zones that didn't exist because they wanted to put in, in our apartment, turn the house into a two-family, and the fact that, um, you know, exceeding the buildable, the, the building size on the lot, I just don't see that as a hardship per se.
Okay, no, I, I appreciate that. I, I don't know if the, the rest of the board agrees necessarily, but I think you have a valid, you make some valid points.
Can I say, this isn't a two-family to me. This is one family. The mom, the daughter. I understand, like, to me, a two-family house is two different people, renting, not knowing. To me, this is a one-family that just needs a little bit of more space.
Why don't we ask the builder and the applicant right now? Is there going to be a separate utility service?
That's what we're saying. They're going to up the electrical to a two-hundred-inch service.
Okay.
But not separately metered though.
Right, even the, obviously the subject is town side. It's going to be tied into the existing.
All right, all right, all right, interesting.
And, and, and it's an in-law, so how, you can walk from one unit to the other to, as that lady just mentioned, in a true two-family, you have a firewall between the two. There's no passing through structure, so it's not truly a two-family. But I know people consider these, after people move out and down the road, they become two families. Somebody swoops it up and runs out one side, you know, they go along and whatever.
All right, do we need, do we need a vote, a motion and a vote to, to go into the board discussion mode? Tamika, ruling?
Technically, no.
Okay, let's not. I don't think we need it either. All right, all right. I, I'm going to propose that, that we give this applicant an area variance. I did the math on my calculator, seven thousand eight hundred eighty-five feet. And, and we're going to, we're going to ask, we're going to, I, I'm proposing right now that we adhere to that, that thirty-foot restriction in seven D. And I'm confident, based on what I've heard from the applicant, that, that, that will not, you know, destroy the project. They'll still be able to do the project. They may have to make a few design modifications. That, that's my proposal. I'm not married to that. I'll, I'll certainly listen to anyone else on the board. Do you want to, Chris, do you want to start? Want to go first?
Um, I mean, yeah, my, my, I'm fine with the way this is and, and I am fine with the, the area square footage, like you said, the variance for that, and I'm okay with allowing the structure to, 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 you know, allow them a little relief on that one area of the R forty. I'm, I'm fine.
So, all right, so I, I'm...
I don't agree with what you're doing.
That's, that's fine, that's fine.
I'm different.
No, that, that's fine.
I'm fine with this just the way it is.
That's why we're discussing.
Yeah.
So my, my thought is, I mean, again, Paul drew that line, so I'm thinking we should give him a little bit more relief. Because if that's, the line is there and he puts that building up and you miss it by two feet, I'm thinking we, like Chris says, give him an extra five feet or something to allow him to put the building up.
I, I got to tell you, I'm just a little, I'm grappling with this. I, I, I have a good comfort level in applying the first prong of seventy, which allows the restrictions in TC2 with the thirty-foot caveat. I'm a little uncomfortable going beyond the thirty feet.
But I'm just saying, even if it's thirty feet and he built that building and you come out and it's, it's thirty-one feet, you know, what happens then?
Oh, but, but I, I trust his ability to get it done with it.
I'm just wanting, it, again, Paul drew that line.
Yeah.
So this, this thing could be back here somewhere and, and then the building's on.
I, I don't think anyone's going to rely on, on Paul Francis.
Okay, okay.
I don't think so.
Okay, but I'm just saying...
It's pretty accurate though. When you look at this, when you take the thirty-foot front of the, of the structure and you, you just mark that out, you know, it's pretty much right there.
Yeah, it's just right on it.
Yeah, and this is a very small drum, so it's not even going to get to the foot here, but...
Right, right. Um, Jake?
I'm in agreement with you, Rick, on the thirty-foot extension. I just think that the building can, I think they'll be happy with the construction. I think they'll be happy with the building. I think it can be done within the thirty feet.
Okay.
And obviously they need the variance, which I would agree with as well, the almost eight thousand feet variance for the lot size.
Yeah, thank you. Art?
I would, I would actually take Chris's version of this, which is if, you know, you, you could, you could write a decision that would effectively grant relief, you know, if necessary for, you know, I guess you might have to figure out some degree of, you know, if, if that corner really looks like three feet over, I don't know what it looks over, but, you know, give them a little extra. Because I personally am not sure how easy it's going to be to, um, to build this if you're actually going to get that corner back over the line. I mean, I don't really know. I'm obviously not a builder.
Yeah.
You know, the only, the only leeway I see, the house is there. The houses are going to move. So it would, you know, maybe you could shorten up the breezeway or somehow, you know, move, move it, you know, in, inside the space, you know, up or down, but I don't know how easy that would be.
Okay. Fair, fair enough. I appreciate that. Paul?
Uh, well, Rick, I agree with you on the thirty-foot... Well, Rick, I agree with you on the 30, on 30-foot line. I mean, that's easy enough to hit. You bring in a surveyor and they, you know, survey it out, find out where their lot is, where the line is. And then, like Art said, you know, you either get rid of that little kick, kick out they have or, or shorten up the breezeway. It's very simple to, to adjust for that. But the, again, you know, I put my piece on as far as the square footage part of the lot. I just don't see that, we should be issuing a variance exceeding the square footage allowed on the TC, TC2. Just where I stand on that.
Yeah, all right. So I, so the, the three voting members are going to be myself, Chris, and Bob, although I very much appreciate the other, the other opinions. So we're, we're in a quandary. We, we want to give, we want to give this applicant relief. It's not that I want to buck you two and like, you know, kind of like force you to, to go along with my, my viewpoint. It's just that I, I have a legally, I, I'm uncomfortable with, with exceeding the 30 feet. I just don't think we have the authority. I think, I think that Art does think we have the authority to extend that, although he words it different than I, than I do. Can you guys live with that? Or do you want to discuss it more? Like keeping her within the 30 feet?
Right, and so even though TC2 is less restrictive, it still has to require us to have that 30-foot.
Yeah, yeah, because 7D says, says under certain conditions, you, if, if, and they meet, they meet those conditions, we can allow the restrictions in TC2, which is such good news for this applicant. But then it says, but, but only in approaching into the left, the more restrictive district, R40, 30 feet. And I'm there, I'm, I'll, I'll give her the variance, I'll go with the first prong, which by the way is against the opinion of David George and David McGrath. They disagree with me on that, as to which applies. But, I mean, we're the board, it's up to us to decide that.
Let me just ask you one question.
Yeah.
Why can't you still build in R40?
Just because they, they're, the zoning is 30, you know, they're allowing you to open up by 30 feet, why couldn't you still?
You, you can, but, you can, but if, I'm saying, it, it just.
You can put an addition on in R40.
You, you can, absolutely. It's, it's just that if you, once you start saying, hey, I, I could, I could do something in R40, does that mean that all the R40 restrictions apply?
Well, it does.
Then, then you would need 60,000 feet.
In other words, if these, we say prongs, the first prong is if you can apply the TC2 less restrictive, you know, requirements, which is how we get to the lesser, the, the less relief on the area restriction, okay? But if it were the other way around and the split lot had, was governed by RC40, well, then they, they would need like 43,000 extra square feet or something like that of relief. So, I mean, that's what the, that's the functional difference between going with one or the other. And I think what Jake and, and Rick are saying is, you know, if you read what it says, you, you get an extra 30 feet if you're going to apply the TC2 prong. And so you, you've got, you know, if you're going to look at the area restriction, it's the whole thing, but you can't, I don't, you know, I, I do think you can't build over the 30-foot extension, otherwise what does that even mean, you know?
Well, hold on, let me just, let me just say this to that point. And again, forgive me for being repetitive, but you find it convenient to take the whole lot into the square footage, no problem, but you're not allowing them to go outside a little bit of an area of the boundary. I mean, to your point, if you're going to say only that portion of the lot should stay in TC2, then you should only take the square footage of that. Now, it's not an 8,000-square-foot variance, it could be a 15,000 or 20,000-square-foot variance. Because now you just lost almost half your lot or 30% or 25% of your lot. So you're picking and choosing how you're opening up the whole lot here. I just, I just find that ambiguous. I find that.
Well, it is ambiguous.
Like, like you guys, well, no, to, to Jake and Rick's point, like, they're, they're taking the whole lot as TC2, but it's not.
No, we're not.
You're taking the whole, you're including the R40 in TC2 with the amount of square footage they need, but you're not going to allow them to build on the whole lot. Like, I, I don't understand that. Like, like, why isn't the principle applied to both of those causes?
Well, no, I, I wouldn't support giving her a 40,000.
No, this, this wouldn't be working out. So if, if we didn't decide that we were going to use the prong that would allow TC2 to expand by 30 feet and we went the other way, I mean, I wouldn't, I'm not voting, but I wouldn't, there's no way. I think even the board, I don't think anybody in the board would be giving this variance because it's way too much. But luckily for the applicant, and I think that we're all in agreement, that they should benefit from the TC2 extension by 30 feet, which to me allows them to build what they want to build. I mean, they, they have to modify it slightly, that's, that's all.
Well, it's a tough bylaw right now. But, you know, what is the 30-foot extension for then? I mean, if, you know, why, why do they have that if it doesn't mean anything? But that's why, to me, the safe way to go, and I'm not voting either, is unless, you know, unless the applicant can say, well, we'll just, we'll, we'll get it inside that, that 30-foot line. I mean, that is the ease, the safest way to go. But if, if, you know, if you didn't want to hold them to that, you know, you, you, you could, you could essentially give a variance, you know, again, that, that carves out, you know, that, that amount of space over that line and then move on to the area issue and grant that.
Do you think we have the power to extend that 30-foot line?
No, it's not extending the 30. The 30-foot line is there.
Okay.
But we're saying we're going to carve out, you know, this corner. But I'm not saying the entire lot, you know, that 30-foot line goes from top to bottom. I'm not saying we're going to move that whole line out 10 more feet.
I know, I just, I just, I just see it as impenetrable.
But, but it is, it is, I think the, the easiest way to go was if we could draw the building back to that line.
Let me just say one more thing to my point. The 30-foot adder creates, it's still, it's still, it still allows for the, the buffer of the other zone, correct?
Yeah.
So it, it, whatever, you know, if we're going to move that line back, whichever way it is, so if, in the, in the, in the R40, you'd have a 20-foot side setback, right?
I'd, I'd have to look at it.
Right, so in a residential, right, we have 20-foot side setbacks, right? They're still not even hitting that.
No.
They're still 23 feet off the lot line.
Yeah, I know.
So again, I think in, in, when you, when you ask like, what is the purpose of the 30-foot buffer? Well, I think it's to, to allow a little bit of leeway within the lot, you know, to, to do more TC2 activity, but it still prevent, it still maintains the, a little bit of a buffer for the, the other, the other zoning district. So, and, and if that is the case, they still aren't even into that area. We're still 23 feet of the lot. So again, I'm just, I don't see a prob, I just, I'm finding it a hard time, like, what's the main problem of the issue? Other than this, this godforsaken 30-foot line?
Yeah, I, I, I just, yeah.
Send me first, I'll go.
All right, I, yeah, I, I just.
I just wanted to add that to it.
Chris, you keep making good points and good arguments.
They should do, Chris.
I just, I just, I just want to, I just want to stick to it. That's what I wanted to do.
I respect that, I respect that, but I just want you to, I'm just trying to give you everything I got to, let you think about ways to allow, if we are going to do what Art is saying, just to open up a little piece, just keep in mind, we're not still going in, we're not, we're not breaching any R40 boundary or, or we're not creating another variance issue in the R40, that's all.
All right.
Well, you're weak, Chris, because in R40.
You have to be a variant.
You're going to have, you need twice the lot size.
Well, the lot size is a different issue. We're just talking about the side, side, side set lot, side lot dimension, side setback.
Right, but they all fall into each other when you start, you know, applying regulations for one specific district. Everything applies, that's applied, so now you're just kind of opening up a can of worms. What else applies now?
Well, that was actually my point before.
I'm not sure, to me, the side setback is not really relevant. It's whether or not they're going to be able to, to get a variance on the area issue. That's really the ultimate point. And so the, the question then is if we're going to say, fine, you know, the TC2 requirements, less restrictive requirements apply, you know, they get the, you know, they're going to get the much lesser variance on square footage, but then the question is, well, what does that mean, that 30-foot line? I mean, does that, you know, I guess the question is, does that mean the whole structure? You know, they're going to get the, the square footage for the whole lot, but does that structure need to sit inside the 30-foot line? If it doesn't, I'm not sure what that line is for, you know?
It does, and that's what it's for. That's what I, that's what I.
All right, so, so let's say we put this to a vote and, and Chris and Bob disagree with me. I, I think, well, we all agree we want to give her the, a variance for the area. Are you two going to vote it down because I'm sticking to my guns on the 30-foot line?
I mean, I guess we want to get it done, right?
I think we raised the motion first.
But I think we, they can make.
We're discussing it, we're entitled to discuss it.
I think they're, they're willing to make the adjustments, so if they're willing to do that, I'm willing to vote for it, just so we can get you on board.
And Chris, can you hold your nose and vote on this one?
I, I, I'm having, just having a hard time. I just don't, I don't understand the purpose of it. I'm where I'm at, you're where you're at, that's where I'm at.
All right. Do we have a, are we ready to have a motion to put this to a vote?
We have to close the hearing first.
Do we have to?
We have to close the hearing and then you guys can take a vote.
Motion to close the hearing?
Yep, but then there can't be any more discussion.
That's what I thought we talked about before.
No, because you guys couldn't continue to discuss the hearing.
Okay, all right, okay, all right, okay. I'm, I'm going to get a copy of Robert's rules. And I'm going to study those. All right. Do I, do we hear, do I hear a, a motion to close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, all opposed? Oh, okay. All right. So now do we have a, a motion to put this to a vote? It, it would be for a 780, I'm going to write this, 7,885-foot square foot variance. And I would put, I would, I'm running the decision and while somebody wants to take it away from me, I think you're going to let me write the decision.
Rigets, rigets.
And, and I'm going to put right in there that, that the, is a condition that you, that they adhere to that 30-foot line. And I'll articulate it, I'll use the language in the bylaw. All right, so do we, do we have a motion to put this to a vote as, as spoken?
Make a motion to put it to vote.
Second?
Second.
All right, also, all in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll oppose.
You're going to oppose it?
The, the third, that they have to stay within the 30-foot? Yeah, I'm, I'm saying that they can go out.
But that, but that would deny, that would deny them the variance.
Right.
The area, that means they can't build.
Okay, all right, so we're not voting on the actual variance, we're just voting on the, the motion. I'm sorry.
Oh, okay. All right, it was a misconstr, all right. Aye, so it's unanimous.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much. You'll get the decision within 14 days. I'll, I'll, I'll file it with the town clerk.
Well, she still had, um, one vote. So we just did vote on the variance.
Yeah.
We did.
Did I, did I screw up?
Well, no, but if I understand, if I vote against that, that doesn't shoot it down, it's still a majority.
No, it's got to be unanimous.
It's got to be unanimous. But, but you changed, basically changed, once we decided what, you see, I think you were, I must have confused.
I get confusing these votes.
Well, I, I'll take the line for confusing.
No, all right.
All right, but I think, I think you did, you did, it was an aye. I heard it, I'm sitting right next to him.
A little reluctant.
Thank you, Chris, I appreciate it. I really appreciate it. Now he's not going to sign it, you know? All right. Okay, thank you very much. We're going to conduct the business. This is a public meeting, you have every right to sit here and stay, but you, you will not hurt our feelings if you pick up and leave.
I just want to say thank you to everybody. I appreciate everything you've done tonight, thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks so much.
Thank you. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is the minutes.
Thank you so much.
The only, the only question I had was, there was some confusion and I'll take the blame for it. Tamika was under the impression that we were voting to deny this and I, and I thought, and I just chatted with her briefly for a minute. I said, well, I don't know if I've ever, if I've ever voted to deny. We, we vote on it, on an issue, someone's looking for relief and we either vote yes or no. I don't think we've, we, I put it, maybe I'm wrong, but I don't think I put it in such a way that we were voting to deny it. Maybe I did.
Rick, if I may, I think where the confusion comes in is that, if you remember, Dave George had said that two of those technically weren't even really valid, the variance and the denial of the.
Okay, I wrote decisions on the, on those two, but.
Yeah, so I think in that case, he said they technically weren't valid, so I think that's why the board voted to deny them because they weren't, it really wasn't an option to approve them.
All right.
Based on the discussion, but I can still pull up the Zoom meeting.
All right, well. Does anyone have a, do you know what I'm saying? Does anyone have a strong feeling about this, the way it's worded in the minutes?
I was fine with it. I wasn't there.
Right. Do you know what I'm, what I'm saying?
Which one, which one are you referring to?
It, it says roll call vote, but it says mo, motion to put a, to, to vote to deny the application. I don't think I ever did a, voted on a motion to deny. I voted on a motion, I voted on, on a certain application and the question was, you know, what was it? Did I, did we vote up or down? We voted down.
We have to look at the tape, I think.
We vote, do you want to, do you want to, do you want to table this until the next?
Yeah, we can push it.
Let's table it, why don't you look at it, okay?
I mean, normally a motion seeks approval of something and you either grant approval or you deny it. It's not usually a motion to deny.
Right, exactly. I think, I think you had a question, Chris, that's what I'm saying.
It was my, my last time.
Project.
Yeah.
I wanted to use an Allen too.
Okay. Look, let's, it's getting a little bit, let's, let's just move on. All right, so I.
A little early today.
I, I told the board, Paul, we're, we're not trying to leave you out of us. Can you still hear us?
I'm hearing you.
Okay, I, I, it's obvious that we need to revamp the rules of the board. They haven't been revised since 2001, I'll take the hit on that. So I, I, I said I was going to do it and I started doing it. So, so this is, this is, and I, I'm going to give you what I did so far. It's just a, just part of a draft. And then there are some things that Chris wanted to add and we all voted on that and we're going to add those in and then there's going to be a separate fee schedule and then we'll, at a, at a later meeting this summer, we'll all get together and talk about these rules. But this is what I want to convey you right now. I, I want to change, I'm proposing that we change the makeup of the board from a three-person board to a five-person board. The statute 48 gives the select board the option to appoint five members or three members. So I'm proposing we go with a five-member board with two alternates.
All right, Rick, if we do that, does it still, the votes still need to be unanimous?
No, it would be, if it was a five-person board, you'd only need four. So you could have one to center and it would still carry.
Okay.
See, I always thought it was a majority.
No, no, 48 says four out of five.
When I, when I was reading a bunch of stuff on that last hearing, all the stuff I read on, on zoning boards was you just had to have a majority.
No, no, I, I don't, I'm not trying to contradict anybody, but 48 specifically says if it's, if it's either five or three, if it's three, it's got to be unanimous. If it's five, you could, it's, it's four out of those five.
Okay, I mean, that, that's what, that's what Holden does, right? They, you know, because I was in front of them a little while ago and, and it's, it's a five-man board, you know, with, with the alternates. And I had a thing that went up and, you know, it was four to one, but it was allowed. So that's, that's essentially, you're talking about.
Right.
Setting it up now at this point, the way.
Yeah, but that's my, I, look, 20 years ago or 30 years ago, the town was much smaller. They, when I got on, almost 20 years ago, they were having trouble getting quarms. And since I've been on, we really, only a couple of times did we have trouble getting a quorum. For the last however many years since most of us have been on, we haven't had that, that problem. I think it's more democratic to have five and that, because that way one person can't put the kibosh on the whole thing. Like we do, like right, right now. But Chris, you could have voted, voted this whole thing down if you wanted.
I agree with that, I mean, it's.
But let me ask you something, if, what if, what's a quorum with a member of five?
You still have to have five. It's just, that's why you have two alternates. You still, you still need five.
Can you have more than two alternates in that? Because in a way, you're, 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 you're going to have a bigger quorum problem than you do right now.
I don't, I don't believe there's a limit. I, I'll look at 48 again, but I. I don't believe there's a limit, I, I'll look at forty-eight again, but I don't think there's a limit.
So, I think Holden has more than two alternates.
Okay, all right, may, maybe we need three, I don't know. But, but this is the thing, in order for us to do, we can't do this on our own. I, or however many people wanna come with me, have to put this on the agenda for a select board meeting, sure. And we have to approach them, and we say, hey, look, we're revising the rules, we're, the rules are none of their business. It's our, it's, we do our own rules, but as far as the makeup of the board, they're the appointing body, they would have to agree to appoint five members. And then I'll say, hey, we're, we're gonna do, gonna do two or three alternates. So, it sounds like we're gonna do three alternates. Because the town, the town is three times the size it was, you know, twenty, twenty years ago, there's three thousand people when I moved here, and now there's like ten?
Yeah, but we went through stretches the last couple of years, like, every month we went on this board, for two, three years, we didn't have nothing.
Yeah.
Just a couple of years ago, I mean, we just had this recent rash of, you know, of, of, of calls, but there was this time that we didn't even need a three-member board, you know? I mean, I'm serious, you know, I, I don't know.
Better part of a year, I remember, you know?
You know, I'm all for like a rotating schedule, like, some of these guys voting more, but I don't, I don't, you know, I don't have to vote every time, I could care less.
Well, I don't think you can do that either, I mean, you gotta have, you know, the voting members, and then if one of them's not there, one of us.
Yeah, it would be, it would be.
We used to alternate.
When, when we had, when, when, when one of the regular members was absent, then we alternated amongst the, uh, alternates.
There's been some times, right, we've just like, uh, not voted on this one.
Maybe once or twice, we, yeah, we did it, I, I, somebody abstained.
Well, it's, yeah, it's been around in the open, so.
Paul?
That was only when somebody either abstained for, um, you know, some, maybe you had missed the meeting, or you were late, or, I remember that happening. But I think it was always, there were other circumstances behind it, that you'd come in late, or you'd missed the meeting, it was a multiple meeting thing or something, you just didn't feel comfortable voting on it.
Yeah, I, I, that's my memory. But either, either way, do, do, do we, we don't have to put it to a vote, I just need to know, do we have a consensus amongst the boards?
I'll make a motion that as a board, we, uh, authorize, we ask that you, um, expand it.
Hey, can I ask you a quick question, before we go, back, back to, um, like, you know, like, we just did this vote, right?
Yeah.
So, Jacob made the motion, Artie seconded it, but does that have to not be the voting members? Like, like, where does that, like?
I don't know.
I, I.
How does that?
I think we have the power to operate the way we do, where we, we hear discussion from non-voting members, I think the board is the board.
Discussion, but making motions are two different things.
Well.
We hear discussion from people out there, and they make a motion.
I mean, technically, you know, I mean, if you want.
No, I'm, I'm fine with you guys doing it, but I'm just saying, do we break any law?
If you wanna be technical. Maybe you should make the motions.
I don't think there's anything.
I didn't know if we broke a law, that's all I'm saying.
One of these crazy rules, or whatever that guy's name is, Robert.
Robert.
Paul?
Under Robert rules, anybody can make a motion that's on the board.
Even if you're not a voting member?
Yeah, because you wanna make, you're moving it to a vote of the voting members.
Okay.
You know that for a fact?
Yeah.
Okay.
I've actually got the Robert rules book in my trunk, but yes, believe it or not.
Thank you, Paul. I, I never really gave it that much thought, I, I, it just seemed very convenient to just kinda operate.
No problem, but just the way this went down right now.
I know, I know.
I was like, hmm, the two guys have a vote.
Is this something we have?
And then the two guys, it was just kinda funny the way it went down, that's all.
Well, because nobody else was.
No, I know, I know, because the two voting guys didn't wanna have to vote, you two guys, you know?
Well, somebody was gonna have to vote.
So, Paul made a motion, I think we need to act on it.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Do, do, is this something we need to vote on?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, yes.
So, Paul's motion is to authorize changing it, however, I might change that to bringing it to, the select board's the only one that can authorize it.
I think that's what he meant.
So, maybe, if it's okay with him, if I amend it to say, to authorize.
Yeah, that's what you meant, right, Paul?
To bring it to the select board.
Absolutely, yes, I meant that to Rick, to take, what, they got talked over, yes, to have Rick take it to the selectmen to expand the board.
Okay.
To recommend, to recommend expanding the board.
Well, before we second that, does, do you guys, I mean, uh, if you wanna discuss it more, I mean, I don't, you know?
Technically, you have to second it before you can have a discussion on it.
Well, I think, I think I'm saying we need more discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, but somebody has to second the vote before you can have a discussion.
One of you guys second it.
I promise, I'm telling you, seven boards, I promise, this is how it goes.
Okay, I'll second it, okay.
Okay, now you can have a discussion.
Now we got a discussion, which we were already, and then we vote after the discussion.
Okay.
It's basically, yeah.
So, your changes are already made for, because have, are there more changes yet, you, that are back?
Oh, oh, this is, this is, I, I'm just informally sharing what I, what I've got.
So, I just wondered, what, so we need to be.
Paul, I'll email, I, look, I've worked on some, some, opposed new rules, and, uh, and I'm, I'm just, because I had it. I'm just sharing it with the board, I'll email it to you.
Yeah. Take a look at it.
Does everyone have a copy?
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, I, I, I don't wanna go through them now.
No, right.
But the, the main issue.
Well, if we're voting on these now, we should.
Well, maybe. No, no, we're not voting on them.
Okay, well, he's got a motion out there.
Well, no, no, not the rules.
The motion that's out there is just for Rick to act, ask the select board if you guys can increase from five to three, but it doesn't have anything to do with whatever.
This is incomplete, I'm, I'm not done with these, this is just what I've got so far, it's just a, it's just an informal draft.
To me, I think we, we oughta know what, what the, what all we're gonna take to the board, and make sure we, you know, whoever's gonna vote on it, or the consensus agree. Because I don't know why we go to the board, Rick, just on this one issue, when there's other things.
No, 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 we, we, we have the authority to draft.
Oh, you mean all these other things? So, the only thing we gotta go to the town on is, is the makeup of the board?
Yeah.
Okay, I get it.
We can vote on our own rules.
We should discuss that.
I mean, it's all covered, it's basically, we're boxed in by forty-eight, I'm almost.
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah.
What do you guys think about a larger board, I mean, I guess that's it.
I'm probably, I'm, I'm indifferent, it, it doesn't matter to me whatsoever, I'm fine the way this is. Um, you know, I do think we have a, a good group of people right here, and whenever you change a board, um, you know, and if you're looking at adding two to three people to this board. Um, the, the flavor and, and whatnot can change, um, you have to be, you know, just be careful of that, which way that can swing. Um, we've got a good mix of different people on this board, um, which, which kinda I think, you know, like, we didn't agree tonight, you know, that's fine. I'm really cool with that, I, I don't have a problem with that, um, you know, the, the, you know, the legal guys had their kinda like, oh, we can't break the rules.
But even we didn't.
The construction guys are, hey, just take that thing in, let's go, I mean, that, that's, that's what makes this board, I think, really cool, to be honest with you. Um, we're not a bunch of yes-men, um, and, um, I think we got a good thing, so I'm a little leery of kinda mixing it up, but honestly, I could care, I really don't care. I'd love to have more voting, you guys voting more, and that's, that's fine with me, I don't care, either way.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing is, do we like three, a majority, a unanimous majority to pass these things, or, or is four to one, you know, is that a better?
Oh, for the rule, when, when we do vote on adopting the rules?
Yeah, I think that's.
Oh, I think it's a majority.
No, 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 I'm just saying.
Okay.
I'm saying the main point, the main change that I think is the most relevant is going from an requirement of three votes major, I mean unanimous.
Yeah.
Versus now you can, you can be five-zero or four to one and still pass it, I mean, that's, that's the biggest difference.
You know, when I got on the board, there were three selectmen, and they went to a five-select board for the exact same reasons that I'm suggesting. It's more democratic, it's more open, it's, it's just fairer for everybody.
Yeah, and, you know, tonight, we have three people, one person dissents, they always look like the bad guy. If you have a five-person board, you have two dissenters, and it doesn't pass, there's no one person that's bearing the, the blame, if you will, for it not going through. It's more of a open, um, you know, the board didn't agree to it. Uh, I think it gives more flexibility to the board, more autonomy, um, to the members, I mean, we're really only talking possibly about adding one more person as an alternate member, uh, to the board. And I personally wouldn't mind seeing another person with a background like Chris's to round us out, you know?
Okay.
Well, I think like in this case, if, if we were a, a five-man board, you know, you could've, you could've dissented and not sunk the, uh, the application. Whereas when it's three.
And the result's still the same, I mean, ultimately, I, you know, I, I honestly, that's fine, like.
I'm just saying, that would be an example of how it's different with five men.
All right, the, the other, the other thing I wanna bring up is that I'm throwing it out tonight, because we happen to be meeting, we're gonna meet again in two weeks. Do you wanna table the issue for right now, and bring, and, and everybody sleep on it, think about it? And then, then we, we can revisit it again at the, uh, the July twenty-eighth meeting?
I'll be perfectly honest with you, I'm the only one that really kinda is like, I, I'm fine with it, if all of you guys are good with it.
Right, just the Robert's rules, though.
Yes.
Uh, we have a vote out there that that would contradict, so let's just, um, for a point of vote, vote down my motion.
He, he, Paul, you can just rescind it.
Rescind, yeah, you can rescind.
All right, no, why not, I'll rescind my motion, making it easier.
All right, so, all right, so we're back to square one, we still may vote on it, do, do you, all right, so Chris just said he's okay to vote. What, and I, I think the other, the other three are, I think, well, Paul, I think everyone, I got four in favor, one ambivalent.
Yeah, I'm cool with it, if you guys wanna go with it, I'll go with it, all right. Keep the motion out there, let's not let it go.
I don't, we don't need to rescind, um, if, if you wanna discuss it more, just, I can't see you guys just all nod, and I'll rescind, but otherwise, we'll vote, I guess.
Yeah, all right, so.
So, can we make a motion, so the, so we just make a motion to vote now, is that what we do?
It's already out there.
It's already out there. So, we just close the discussion, and it's time to vote?
Yep, it's just time to vote.
There you go, okay.
All right, so do we, do we have a, a motion to close the discussion?
You don't have to do that, it's not a public hearing.
It's not a public hearing.
Let's vote.
Okay, all right.
It's not the vote.
So, so all, all in favor of the board approaching the selectmen with the proposal to, to transition from a three-member board to a five-member board? With three alternate associate members? Um, do I, do I hear?
Aye.
All right.
Yeah, all favor, aye.
All favor, aye, yeah, all goes, okay, I got a little lost there. Um, yeah, okay, so, uh, what I'll do is I'll, I will.
Good, I just suggested one quick thing, you probably should've brought this up, but I just thought of it as you, you were, we started the vote, we closed the thing. But to Jacob's point, like, just out of respect to the select board.
Yeah.
And any other board, when we do go bring this change up to the select board, you think we should have these, these, hey, this is what we wanna make changes to, like, just from a, just from a respect point of view. I, I mean, we may have the right to do this, but just to let them know that we're making some changes, no, or just wanna do it, I don't care.
Well, well, the thing is, I, I.
It's not done yet.
I would, I would have, yeah, what is, this, these aren't complete.
I understand, but I just don't wanna piecemeal things to them either, you know what I mean, so.
Well, well, it's.
I like to just give somebody everything I'm on shot.
See, see, these are our rules, and we, we, I know what you're saying, it's just, I.
I don't know how much they'll care.
It's, it's not re, look, I, I put in here composition of the board, but technically, the, these should not, these, this provision doesn't have to be in my rules, or our rules. It, I just put it in there.
Sure.
Um, you know, to, to me, it's a really a completely, completely separate thing, you know?
That's fine.
But, so what, is that, what I, what I'm proposing to do is to, is to draft a memorandum, I'll circulate it, well, I don't know if you even want me to circulate it. But I'll, I'll, I'll draft a motion, our proposal, we, I will ask that it be put on the agenda, and then I will show up. And once it's on the agenda, we'll all communicate, and anybody who's on the board who wants to physically be present will, will have the option of doing it. I think I can do it by myself, somebody might be on vacation, you might not be available, but I, I know the way the select board works, that pretty much, you know, you, you kinda have to go with their schedule. When they tell you that, that, that you could be heard, that's when you show up.
Mm-hmm.
You know, that's usually the way it goes.
Cool, no problem.
But I'll keep everybody in the loop.
Yeah.
Yeah, I appreciate your thoughts. All right, one more item, and I don't really think it's an item, we, we got a letter on the, um, the tower going up by Central Tree.
Yeah, yeah.
School, and they're proposing to put the balloons up at a certain time, I don't have any problem with their proposed time.
Me neither.
Does anybody, this, this is not something we're gonna vote on, I just, I, Tamika said you want.
I don't even know what's the balloon test for, to show the height?
Yeah, show how high it would be.
They're, they're gonna have, it's gonna be like, four hours, it's in the email, you'll see, but it's four-hour windows on two separate days. One weekend, one weekday, is what we, we suggested to them, and, uh, it's like, I don't have any problem with it, and we don't have to vote on it.
I don't know.
It, it's just that Tamika said, should we just, should we touch on it, should we discuss it, so we're just touching on it, okay.
I guess Dan was specifically looking for the Board of Appeals to just kinda give their okay, if he moved forward with this, to publish a hearing, to notify you better.
I, I don't.
Because ultimately, we have to accept his test, so we don't wanna put him down in a row, but we're not gonna accept.
Yeah, we don't have.
Oh, that wasn't long enough, we want six hours, not four.
I don't think we have to vote, I think we just, we can just tell.
No, no, I just wanted to know you guys okay with it before.
Yeah, we're, we're okay, Paul, you're okay, right, with that?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the dates here, the eight seventeen, eight twenty-two dates, hang on, just wanna.
Okay.
Look at the calendar real quick, um, just while, yeah, I mean, we need to be able, we, the, the times need to be published somehow in that town, so people actually know what the heck they are. Yeah, that week, I mean, that week looks fine, that week, weekend, I don't see any reason why it wouldn't.
You know, Tamika, maybe it'd be a good idea to put it on the sign up town.
No, that's a good idea.
Information sign up in front of the, uh, safety building?
Sure, I can talk to Ron.
Maybe they can throw it on there, and just let people know when you get close, so.
Sure, and we can put the hearing notice on the town website, too, that you're gonna put it here.
And all, they're gonna notify all the supporters and, and everybody, so, you know?
Yeah, give it out there.
Send a memo out to the other boards, and see if those guys wanna see it, particularly the planning or DBW guys, you know?
Yeah, I mean, I think more people know what's going on, better, you know?
Yeah, obviously, they try to get it in town quick as they can.
They wanna do it at midnight.
On a potty, potty night, yeah.
Okay, so I, I, I don't think we have anything else, anything else.
Nope.
All right, Tamika's not, all right, um, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
You board members better make that.
Yeah.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All right.
Aye, all opposed, all right.
These are our plans.
Good to meet you.